Hello.
Hello, are you on yet?
Okay, everybody. Welcome to our workshop meeting, City of Dania Beach, Advertising and Marketing. It is Tuesday, January 31st, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Uh, Kirk, can we please have a roll call?
I can't hear anything.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
I.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
He's running behind.
Commissioner Salvino.
I'm here.
District Manager Sosa Cruz.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
Okay, all right, let's jump right into it, right into the discussion of advertising and marketing. Candido?
Definitely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, residents. Basically, this workshop started with Commissioner Davis and, and her thinking outside the box, how we could increase our, our visibility in working with the agencies surrounding the city, such as the airport, Dania Point, the casino, Chamber of Commerce, possibly outside Chamber of Commerce like in Hollywood, how, how can we partner up? Publications, magazines, either working magazines that involve beaches, tourism, fishing, the marine industry, boating, it's all encompassing. And, and Commissioner Davis has been in discussions with individuals from the airport, individuals that handle marketing and PR for placement at the airport and other areas that could increase the, the city's visibility as far as bringing in businesses, bringing in tourism, bringing in visitors, and, and we're very excited in working with Commissioner Davis on this project. And, and I'll go ahead and pass it over to Commissioner Davis. And we're ready to, to move or to work in the direction that the commission decides. And with that said, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Candido. That was a perfect introduction. This is very exciting because this was over a year in the making, looking at ways that we can maximize our visibility of Dania Beach, our Broward's first city as we get to the 120th anniversary. And it, I wanted to look, and I took a year to travel and see all the different advertisements, and I kept saying, everybody has to come through Dania Beach, they have to leave through Dania Beach in order to, to get to wherever they're going. And it is hopefully part of our strategic plan that we don't want to be a pass-through city. We want to be a destination city, we want to be a destination location. And every time I went to the airport, I saw all these different advertisements, all these different cities, the Everglades, different universities, and I said, we don't even have a presence inside of the airport, outside of the airport, but yet, pretty much, you can't, the airport is in Dania Beach. So if we can't have our, if we can't have our name on the airport, let's at least have a presence within the airport or somewhere visible so that we can all mark our own territory as our city and make sure that people know that they are in Dania Beach, Broward's first city. So I did a lot of research, I went through four different terminals, I did the, I looked at all of the inventory probably over a year ago, the prices, the inventory has changed since then, so this is stated, vision of what is available, the traffic that we would see, the impressions that we would see. You're going to see print versus digital. So I'm, I have two going on, so I'm going to try to get through this because it is not just my city, but I want to see your input, get your feedback, and make sure that we're all looking at best marketing opportunities for our city to brand our city and make it a destination location. Are we ready, Monica? The commission does have a printed version, but we definitely need, yeah. Frank's going to handle it. There we go. All right, so without further ado, let's go to the next slide. This is advertising inside and outside of the Fort Lauderdale Airport. It should be known that Clear Channel is the only company that is allowed to advertise at the airport, so that's why their name is there. All the other marketing materials that we might want to do would need to go out to an RFP, but since they have a monopoly on the airport, Clear Channel is the only, the only company allowed to advertise in the airport. So if we look at the numbers here, Fort Lauderdale is the fastest-growing passenger hub in the United States. It is number two in the country. Are we missing one? Yeah, we're missing, go back one. There we go. It's number two in the country in terms of airline passengers. So Fort Lauderdale designated marketing area has over 1.94 million people with a workforce of 37.8 almost. The big picture here is that tourism, 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 we want to get in on that tourism market. So with over 13-plus million annual visitors that come to our designated marketing area, they spend over $6 billion annually. And so we want to get some of those tourism dollars to Dania Beach. Another interesting fact is that 49% of the adults in Fort Lauderdale Designated Marketing Area have flown in the past 12 months. So half the people who live in this area have flown in the last year. Next slide, please. So now we can see the number of annual passengers versus the number of monthly passengers. We have over 37, almost 37.8 million annual passengers with a monthly traffic of over 3 million people monthly that come through the Fort Lauderdale Hollywood Airport. There are, this is the advertising part of it, it's over 102, almost 103 million impressions. And for those out there in the public, and maybe here in the private, that don't know what impressions are, they're the amount of times that people see an ad versus the amount of times that people click on an ad. So in the airport, they get over 102 million annually and over 8.5 million monthly impressions through their advertising campaigns inside of the airport. And the next most important fact is that there's over almost 300 flights daily, and 54, 54% of Fort Lauderdale frequent flyers have flown for business in the last year. Next slide, please. All right. This one just looks at the amount of domestic travel. We know that everybody's flocking to Fort Lauderdale in, in this South Florida area from California, from New York. I just met somebody from Boston and Las Vegas the other day. So we have over a lot of people who want to come here to live, but we have almost 28 million people who are annual domestic passengers. And you can see where their domestic leading destinations are in Atlanta, Newark, New York, LGA, NJFK, as well as Baltimore and BWI. So 78% of the traffic is domestic and with 91 non-stop flights. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, this is, this is a very important slide, the monthly traffic by concourse. So with over 3 million travelers for, per month that come to the Fort Lauderdale Airport, it's important to look at the most highly trafficked areas. So if you look here, Terminal 1, you can see that there's three different concor, or two different concourses, concourse B and C with 8%, 13%, and 20% passengers of all of the passengers that come through the airport, the majority of them come from Terminal 1. So I thought it was important that we look at the most highly trafficked areas and focus on those areas for advert, for potential advertising. The next most highly trafficked area is Terminal 3 with 19%. Next slide, please. You, you can, you can go to the available inventory, that was. We'll just go, the other one just had a profile, the commission has it in there, in their folders, but it really just talks about the demographics of the, of the designated marketing area. And basically, it just gives a profile of the people who are traveling. So with that, you're going to, we're going to show you the current available digital marketing and print marketing areas that are currently available in the airport right now. I will break down, you look at, they have the description, the target, the size of the inventory, how much it is to produce, install, remove it. how much it is to produce, install, remove it, as well as the net media rate card versus the net negotiated rate card. And I wanted to make a distinction. So the net made, the net media rate card is basically the value, the price, the value of the price, and then the net negotiated rate card is the actual price that they charge per period. And a period is 28 days. So these are monthly costs, but it's also important to know that these can be bundled within a year and we can negotiate a much lower price for all of the advertisements if we were to do an annual contract versus a period contract. So this first one is a jet bridge wrap. So this is going to capture, um, the, the hallway, basically the jet bridge as the passengers are arriving and departing. It's the first and last impression to, to, to capture the audience. And you can see that, uh, what the target is and the, um, what the prices per period are. All right, next slide, please. This available inventory is the lit tension that fabric display. So this is actually, uh, I believe a digital soft lit tension fabric display that shows the, where the arriving passengers come in. Most of these are for the arrivals, which we would want to capture coming to our city as soon as they come in. Then we want them to come to Dania Beach as they arrive. Um, and we can see that that is what the target size is, the installation and removal. And that's over $7,000 per period. But if you look at the size, a lot of these can be digital. Um, it can be motion or stag, stagnant. So you can change them, uh, picture or you can leave it as a, uh, just, it, just as it is. Next slide, please. We have the specialty display sponsorship area. That's where people come in and they sit down. And when people are sitting down, sometimes they're waiting for their baggage. This is located in concourse A, which is also Terminal 1. So if people are sitting, they're waiting, then they would have to sit and look at whatever is going to be on this display sponsorship. And obviously it costs a lot more than the other ones, um, but it is definitely more visible. So we have options to see how much we, if we want to do a small advertisement options or if we want to do larger ones with more visibility. Next slide, please. So this one is the tension fabric display. This is not a digital one. This is something that as the people are coming in, and this is a smaller one. You can see that it costs a lot less, but it definitely, um, you know, it captures some people when they're coming in and out of the airport, but this one is in concourse A as well, which is the most highly trafficked area. Next slide, please. I think this, okay. Okay. All right. So this is the tension fabric display. If you see the little shell on the wall with the beach and the one in the back, um, you can choose the different sizes that you want. Obviously this one is in concourse B with not as much traffic. So this is not one that I would recommend, but it is definitely one that is available. Next slide, please. And these are the baggage carousel wraps. Maybe not this format, but when you're waiting for your baggage, I'm a girly girl. Every time you have to pack lotion, you have to pack perfume, you have to, if you're going away, you have to, uh, wait in that baggage claim. And there's nothing else to do but sit there and look about what's around you until your bags come out. So this is kind of, this is an effective one that would be in Terminal 1, which is also in one of the most highly trafficked areas. What's, uh, important to note about this is that there is no cost for production, installation and removal. Um, and it's in a highly trafficked area. Next slide, please. And this one has a lot of visibility as it is in Terminal 1. It's a tension fabric banner that you can have hanging down as people come up and down Terminal 1. If you've ever flown Southwest, as soon as you come down the stairs, this is one that cannot change. It's fabric, it's printed, but the price is much lower per period. And if you wanted to just have a highly visible ad as soon as people are coming, uh, from the plane or coming into Fort Lauderdale Airport, it would be one of the first things that they saw in a highly trafficked area with a very, with, with one of the lower price points. So, uh, that is one for consideration as well. Next slide, please. And this is a Clear Channel fabric display. So this one is not digital. It would just be in the terminal, Terminal in the baggage claim area. Again, where you have to wait for your bags and look around and see what's there. We could create a wonderful slogan, visit Dania Beach. I know Katya's been, uh, tagging that a lot. Whatever we want to let people know that we have the closest beach to the airport. We have the closest, uh, entertainment center to the airport, which is Dania Point. We have the closest casino, I believe, to the airport. So we have a lot of to offer when people come in and we just would should decide how we want to capture them when they come in. Next slide, please. Of course, this is one of my favorites, but it's also one of the most expensive because we did not, we do not have our name on the airport. This is one way to get our name on the airport. It is a large, large banner that is 1,200 feet wide by 360 feet high. Everybody, it, it exposes everybody to the passengers going by in and out of the airport. Uh, the exterior, and it's on the exterior of the parking garage. So it has the highest visibility, but it's also one of the greatest costs for getting that highest visibility. Next slide, please. And again, this is another baggage carousel wrap and it's in Terminal 2. So it's a less highly trafficked area. So that's not something I would recommend, but it is also something that is available. Next slide, please. This is a tension fabric banner. Uh, it is overhead the tip, the fabric banner, and it captivates arriving passengers, targets them from Terminal 2. Again, a less trafficked area than Terminal 1, uh, but the price point is a lot lower. Next slide, please. And there's another fabric tension display. It's a larger, at the, it's in Terminal 1 and it is a highly trafficked area. It is at a very low price point compared to the other digital areas. And it also has a higher visibility because of the location. Next slide, please. This one was in concourse D, which I believe is in Terminal, I think it's Terminal 2. I believe it's Terminal 2. Um, it's not as highly trafficked, but the price point is mid, medium grade compared to the other ones. And, um, you know, so, but it's, it's in a waiting area so that you, people who are waiting for their planes or coming back and would just, you know, they would be able to see the, it's, it's not a, it's not a large area. So it's not one of my favorites, but it is available. Next slide, please. Again, the column wrap that's in, uh, baggage claim 3, Terminal 3, which is again, uh, the second highly trafficked area. And, um, it's again, in the baggage claim area where people would have to see it when they're waiting for their bags. It is at a lower price point if you wanted to consider that. Next slide, we're getting there. This is a tension fabric design that, that hangs overhead in the airport. So you have different, um, options for arriving passengers that it targets. And it goes and navigates through baggage claim and people just have to see it as they're going to claim their bags. It's also at a lower price point. Next slide. And next slide. Another column wrap. We've seen this one, but this was available in Terminal 4, which is less highly trafficked. So let's go to the next slide. And then this one is a direct view network. Now this one is another expensive one, but what it does is it packages 14 direct view network units. It's strategically placed in high-traffic areas and it provides, um, coverage, airport coverage, advertising coverage. And it captures 100% of the arrivals and 100% of the departures. And so that's why the price point for that is a lot more. You can also have, I believe you can change the image on that or you can have it static. Next slide, please. And these ones are, this is another baggage claim, uh, area. So it can, it can be static or it can be motion. Uh, you can see the Broward County Commission there. That's in Southwest Terminal 1. Uh, I don't know that we would want to have our commission to take their own pictures there, but you know, I think we should actually think of advertising, but they are welcoming everybody to the city, oh, to Broward County. So they have their, they have their images up there and it is in Terminal 1, which is a highly trafficked area. All right, next slide. And I believe that we've seen this digital view network. This one is, only has two direct views instead of 14 direct views. So the price point is less than the other one, but it is, uh, it does capture, it targets 100% of concourse A, of all of the arrivals and all of the departures. Next slide, please. And this is another tension fabric display in a less highly trafficked area. Next slide, please. And this is a highly visible tension display fabric. It captures 100% of the arrivals and 100% of the departures in, in concourse B, which is not as heavily trafficked as, as concourse A, but the size of it, which is 327 feet wide by 72 height, um, is, has a little bit more visibility and, uh, but it's not in the most highly trafficked area. Next slide. All right. This is another fabric tension display. This is static. This is another lower price point, but this one is in Terminal 1, which has more traffic than all of the other terminals. And this is something that you can do per period or annually. Next one. Uh, this is the one that I see all the time, the universities. This contains two soft attention fabric displays. And you see the one at the front with NSU and the one in the back with NSU. And as you're walking to your gate or coming from your gate, you're going to see that both times coming from, from the airport or going to your destination. Next slide, please. And this is the one, the video walls. These can be static or I believe you can change the image as you're going to your baggage claim, as you're going to get your, um, as you're going to get your luggage. This is something that you have to see as you're going down the escalator. So you have the price point for that is a little bit higher because of the higher visibility. Next slide, please. So another direct view network is in concourse B, which is not a highly trafficked area. So that is not something that I would recommend, uh, considering at this price point. Next slide. And we made it. All right. So there's a lot of different options for all of the inventory that we have. Uh, we do have, uh, Clear Channel people on the line. However, in the interest of time, if there's specific questions about the marketing and about the, uh, pricing, then we can write those questions down. Um, we can have, send them to Maxine so that, um, we can have, uh, Clear Channel to address them at a later point. But, um, if there's any comment or what you think about digital, I mean, what you think about advertising at, of the airport, then I would like to hear from the panel at, or hear from the commission at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Davis. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Commissioner Salvino.
Everybody hear me before I start rambling on?
Not very well.
How about now? Is that better?
No.
No?
Try.
Okay. Well, I'm talking, I'm talking test, test. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. All right. As long as you can hear me, I'll talk. If you can't hear me, I'll just put it off to later. So we, we good, you good to go, right?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Uh, Joyce, you did a nice presentation. I got the message on all the different type of, um, advertisements that we can do in the airport. A couple of things that, um, come to mind and, um, one, I might have missed it, but how long is a period?
28 days.
How many?
28 days.
28 days. Okay. So it's, it's just
28, 28.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all right. So 28 days you pay that fee for. Okay. Um, so I guess it depends on
I'm sorry. I'll let you finish, then I'll say, I said 28 days, but it's negotiable if you do an annual pack, package just instead of a monthly package.
Right. That's what I was getting, that's what I was getting to next. That's what I was going to say next. So the thing, uh, you know, I know that we can discuss more things later, uh, about what we think, but I think it's best that while you're on the subject of the airport, uh, two things come into mind. I think that, uh, after hearing that we are now the third largest tax base in Broward County between Fort Lauderdale and Hollywood, being first and second, I think the recognition from Broward County should be located in Dania Beach. With that being said, that would, that would help our digital advertising as much more because of the amount of money that we could be willing to spend uh, because that we are noted, noticed on the advertisement of the airport or at least in their, um, announcement, if they don't want to change all the print. What I was going to say is on some of the print that we do, maybe we should be able to say, you know, th, this is what's happening at the, uh, welcome to Hollywood for our, our own sign would say, welcome to Fort Lauderdale National Park, located in Dania Beach, and this is what's happening in Dania Beach. So if they don't want to do it, we could put that on our banner ourself to make sure people are aware that Dania Beach is there where we are. I feel like we're being cheated with that, number one. Uh, number two, I saw this, the high-traffic areas, uh, one of the things that we really, I think, focus on, and I probably won't go much more than this, but we really should focus on, uh, Terminal 1 and Terminal 4. I think Terminal 1 is with Southwest and the low, and then some of the Bahama areas and so on, that we have a lot of frequent, uh, mileage. And the other one is, uh, we're Spirit and, and JetBlue and all the, the more, because they're going to be headquartered in Dania Beach. And I'm sure that that terminal, because of that, will expand the passengers, um, in there probably as, as much as Terminal 1 at a later date. So, um, the advertisement would be, uh, also, I was going to suggest that possibly we could get co-op advertising dollars from some of the local, uh, larger entities, the casino, uh, Dania Point and so on, to help offset the price that is on a, uh, you know, co-op in type of thing where we pay half, they pay half. Just as suggestions. Uh, if anything else pops up, I will bring it up, but I can get into depth further on it. I just don't want to drag it out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Lo.
Yes. Whoops. Actually, to piggyback on that, I was also going to suggest that we talk to the casino, Dania Point, um, maybe some other, um, larger entities in town and see if there's something that we can do to work with them so that we're not, uh, we don't have the burden of the full cost of everything. The other thing is, I, I think, I would agree with Terminal 1 and Terminal 4, but I think where we really need to focus would be primarily in the baggage claim areas because people that are going to be staying for more than a day are more likely than not going to have a bag that they've checked. You get a lot of business people that might be in and out for the day that travel frequently. I know I've done it myself, where you fly in and out someplace just for a day. Um, and you don't really have time to stop and, and visit the local places. But people who are going to be here, maybe that they're coming here, they're going to get on a to be here, maybe that they're coming here, they're gonna get on a cruise, or they're flying in and they're gonna stay for, you know, a week to visit family, or they're, you know, going, checking out the whole area and trying to see the tourist sites are the, gonna be the ones that go in and have a bag. So, I, as opposed to focusing on worrying about which terminals and whatnot, I, I think we really need to focus on the baggage claim area, because that's where you're gonna get, I think you're gonna get the most bang for your buck, but that's just my thoughts on it.
Okay.
Ralph, you said it on automatic, I'm sorry.
Huh?
You still have it in automatic. It's all right, don't worry about it.
Okay. Um, I got on like ten minutes late, so I saw most of the presentation on, on the Dana Beach Airport, I'll call it. Are we talking about spending the, most of the funds here at the airport and then the digital offerings is separate, or? Okay, okay, well, I like the big banner that's on the outside of the airport. I think if we're having something coming up specifically to be very strategic on when we place that banner, if we go with that, I also like, and I agree with the baggage claim areas, because you have a lot of people sitting around there that are waiting for bags and bags, and if you travel enough, you know, bags don't come out quickly at the baggage claim. The different forms of, there were, there were a lot, so I would have to like see them again and list them and see what makes the most sense for, for our money, but I also wanna see if we could have maybe some type of sponsorship package to help us even pay for, pay for it. Someone else writing at the bottom, you know, sponsored by such and such, that's another way to stretch our dollars further.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Yes, so from my understanding, we have, we earmarked a hundred thousand dollars from our contingency fund for advertising. So, yeah, half these options are off the table if, if it's just basically coming out of our money. So, like, like Commissioner Salvino said, if we could get, you know, same thing Commissioner James, if we could get, team up with, you know, the casino or Dana Point to promote their businesses as well, then that'll definitely help us offset the cost and get, you know, the most bang for our buck. And that's the biggest thing for me, is we really have to pinpoint how we're advertising and marketing our city. We can't just say Dana Beach, see it, live it, love it. You know, it really doesn't give people an idea of what to do in our city and what our city has to provide. We have to say, hey, you know, we, you, you can visit our beaches, you could visit our dining, you could visit the shopping, you could visit the casino, you can fish, there's, there's options, but we have to know how to professionally market those options that attracts tourists the most. You know, I don't know if any of us are marketing experts, but I'm sure it'd be help, it'd be beneficial to seek some outside help. We could use some of our contingency fund for professional guidance. It should just work.
Got it. Thank you, thank you so much for all of those comments. Those are things that we considered. This was just basically to show you what the possibility of the traffic was, what the high-traffic areas are, and the possibilities for inventory. The manager and I have had very, very, very preliminary discussions with Dana Point to just let them know that this is what, an avenue that we were exploring. So, we did think in advance to not just use all of our contingency funds in one fell bang, but we did think about the other entities as well, as far as the casino. And I think that you're right. I know that the airport has in-house production team, and they have professional marketing teams, and, and so that they would be able to assist us with that. I also think that we do need to really look at the content, and that is not something that we considered. I want people to know that we have the entertainment center closest, that we have the beach that's closest, that we have the pier, that we have these different things, but I think as a commission, that's what we want to decide now, is the content and what we want to put out there. We're not just to brand, see it, live it, love it, like you said, but to get people to, you know, to get people to come to Dana Beach. So, we, we would want to think about what we would want as a commission for that marketing message to be, and I think having a professional, you know, team or somebody who's a professional marketing person, who has proven marketing ability to assist us with the message we would want to send, would also be very helpful. And the last thing I wanted to say is that twenty-eight, twenty-eight or thirteen, twenty-eight, a period of twenty-eight or thirteen periods equals one year. So, if you, you would get thirteen periods for one year for the advertising, and the thirteen periods has a special rate consideration, and you can see what that special rate would be if we decided to go with the annual advertising.
And I was gonna add, I would, I'd really like to see what kind of a rate they would give us if we did a lengthier time period, because I think that's gonna be important, because these are very expensive, and unless our budget is strictly going to be for the airport, I don't see how we could even do this. I mean, you'd need to, because I mean, there's other things, there's other avenues that we can use as well that are less expensive, that might also give us a wide range. I mean, for example, like, if, if you're flying into the airport, you know how you have the little screens and stuff, a lot of times on the planes, and they have like little advertisements going on and stuff? It'd be nice if we had like a little ad for us on one of those screens, that, you know, as you're landing, so you'd know that you're coming into Dana Beach. You know, something like that, or even just put up our logo or something, something that showed up. I don't know how much something like that would cost. You know, that might be more expensive, I don't know.
Well, that's where the digital marketing comes in.
Right, but I mean, there's, I mean, there's just, there's lots of other options, and I just don't want to limit ourselves if we're, if we're, you know, if we have a hundred thousand dollars, you know, it's, that's gonna go really fast, so.
I, I understand that, but I also understand the power of partnership as well, so.
Absolutely.
It doesn't have.
That's why I'd like to know what the full, all of the potentials are as far as costs.
That's what, that's what the workshop.
No, speaking of partnerships, I was thinking of, in listening to the dialogue and thinking of messaging, I think that Dana Point is probably about, probably our largest ally. I would say Dana Point, and then try to target the casino to do like coads. You know, we can, we can promote other businesses in our city, because it brings the people to our city anyway. And so, I think if Dana Point wanted to do some promotional advertising at the airport and that split cost with them, they have a marketing and advertisement budget, I'm not sure when their fiscal year starts or ends, but I think that would be great. So, we're talking about the content, let's talk about the fine dining that we have in Dana Beach, let's talk about the businesses that we have in Dana Beach. And we can do that with a Dana Point type of advertisement. Also, not just advertising, we always see Hard Rock Casino, Hard Rock Casino, but we have the Dana Beach Casino, when you also add that into our advertisement, because when we're looking at, you know, what is our messaging going to say other than see it, live it, love it, we really have to advertise businesses. And so, I'm not sure how we get to that point of which businesses we use, because I know it then gets to why my business and not this business or services that we have, but I want us to also think about those partnerships, that, that could be a possibility of cutting costs. And the only reason why I want to try and cut these costs is so that we can explore other avenues as well, to be able to do the marketing, and I think those partnerships would greatly help us in that messaging.
Thank you, thank you. Um, here's an idea, you know, this is a workshop, so we're supposed to be spitballing. The airport is in the city of Dana Beach, so that means we own a lot of land around there, so there's almost a way that if we get approval for signage, we could place signs around the airport in our city, you know, in our territory.
That's one of the reasons why, when you come into the city, we have the large logo and the welcome to Dana Beach sign that really does stand out, so people see it. I know that when the agreements were made, that we did cede our own property to the county, so the county actually technically owns that property at this point.
Okay.
So, we don't actually own the property, but we do, yes, we do have the properties around it, it's just a matter of which, which way are people gonna go, and it's probably more likely that they're gonna go to where that large sign is, so.
Yeah, because right now, the only sign is that off-ramp sign, says Dana Beach.
Right, but when you come down on US-1, the first thing you see is the giant D with the welcome to Dana Beach.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about. I was just saying, we get closer.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
Yeah, there's a way, and then, if there's a way we could work with the airport somehow, like, like Commissioner Salvino said, to get our name on it, or maybe our city could get some sort of discount since it affects all of our residents, you know, so. Yeah, it could be some, I know, exactly. It's just ideas, so you know, that's where we all gathered here today and took time for our day, so we could try and figure out the best route for our city.
There, I've had my hand raised for quite a while, did you guys forget me out there?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Salvino, go ahead.
I think you guys don't love me no more. You know, when we start talking about the co-op advertising, some of the things that I used to do with, with my business and some of the, the, the manufacturers is like, for instance, on your restaurants that are smaller, that can't afford to put out a lot of money, you know, you, you pick out four or six restaurants, and you go, and just to give you, just a little bit of a vision, you put a, you know, our logo, live it, see it, live it, love it, in the middle, Dana Beach, you know, patronize these restaurants, and you put six of them on it, but one at the top left, one in the middle left, one on the bottom left, you put it out there, and you put these names on there. If that banner cost you four thousand dollars for that period, each one of those persons, we'd put up, you know, a thousand, and each one of them would put five hundred apiece, and that, everybody splits that, they, their name of that restaurant goes up in that corner, that's just one thing you could do. These other developers that are out there that have these places that we're building, and they're gonna need to rent them, all the new developments going up there, they could put a banner through, see it, love it, Dana Beach, do you want to live here? Try this out, and they pay for part of that banner there, but Dana, every time they do that, we incorporate our name, Dana Beach, you know, located by the Fort Lauderdale National Airport, you know, I mean, all those things, but that's how, those are the other reasons that you bring in all the, the development, you bring in the restaurants, and you bring in Dana, you know, because we can't keep going back to Dana Point and the casino, we have to use every entity that's in our city to be able to advert, give them all an opportunity to advertise, and when someone mentioned that, you know, why not me? Well, everybody can be included, because we have, as Commissioner Davis said, there's many places throughout the, the, throughout the, the airport, or wherever we put it, whether it's another form of advertising somewhere else, we put that out there, and the price is there, they pick the price they can afford, and we have, we have, we put together a package of what we're willing to pay as a co-op, and then you're gonna see all these people come out there, and that hundred thousand dollars that I think you said that we have for advertising, you're probably gonna, between some of these bigger places, you're gonna pick up another hundred thousand dollars, I assure you.
Actually, to add to that, just real quick, I mean, you could do something like to, to promote the beach and the pier, you could talk to like Quarter Deck and Lucky Fish, and have each of them put some money in as well, so this way, I mean, they're local businesses that would obviously benefit, and it would also promote the pier and the beach. So, just, you know, ideas like that, so it's not just Dana Point, or not just the casino, but some of these other groups that maybe could work together.
I agree with that. I think as many options that we can bring together, as many businesses, as many developers, as, you know, that, that's gonna lower our costs overall, so I think that we're all on the same page as far as that's concerned. I, I do caution with Commissioner Salvino about just always tapping to the same one, but maybe there's a way to maximize it with a lot more entities. I also, which I thought was, could be beneficial for us, is that I ran into Stacy Ritter, who's the CEO of the Broward County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and they just had an amazing commercial on Good Morning America, where I saw a pink lifeguard tower, so I know that they were in Dana Beach, but it was there for like two seconds, but I think that, you know, getting expertise from somebody like, you know, Stacy Ritter, and understanding what those marketing opportunities are, and how we get them out further, and, you know, how we can, how we can use their expertise with what we're trying to do. I think what we're doing right now is amazing as far as getting our ideas going of, of how we could maximize our visibility without, you know, taking our hundred, our hundred thousand dollar budget and, and using it all-in-one place, so I, I think we're all on the, the right page here. But what I would love to be able to do, and I would really like to get like that messaging narrowed down, something that would just wow and, and really bring something forward to see, to see how we, we wow the people with our messaging other than just our tagline, so, thank you. I also, if you guys are ready to move on from this conversation, I do have the digital marketing conversation, and then I'm done, done.
Well, I just, I guess I want to know what direction we're going in now. Are we saying that we're going to go and contract someone else to come and help us, or are we just saying we're gonna go possibly have other conversations for people to bring things back? So, I know that we're having this dialogue, but what is the action item? I know we can't vote on it today, but what, what are the next steps as far as just the airport? Are we going to have a soft decision on how much money we are willing to put into the airport pot of the advertising? Do you guys want to do that? Because I, I want to make, I want to get some type of consensus to go somewhere with this, so are you guys comfortable doing that?
Well, I still think we should listen to the digital part to see maybe if that would make a difference. So, if you say, if you listen to the digital advertising and say, well, maybe I think we should put more money into digital, or maybe I should put more money into advertising and exploring our options, maybe we designate somebody to go around to the different options of the places that we talked about, and just start those preliminary, preliminary, preliminary conversations to gauge the interest that, that's there. But I, I know that the digital marketing is also another way that could be coupled on top of the average, of the airport advertising, but I, I, I think that we're, you know, that, that's one part of the conversation, unless you guys think that you, you have a specific number in mind, that you would say, I want to dedicate this much to exploring the airport advertising, and then we can, in any amount over that, we would have to get partnerships for, and then move on to the digital marketing.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll listen, but just thinking out loud, like I would want to do at least half, because you have to have some, some type of funds, you can't, you know, you're gonna make an investment, you gotta make an investment, and maybe it's a phase, and maybe it's something that we put on as recurring, and maybe as Commissioner Salvino said, we get this sponsorship package together to where other businesses are, you know, feeding into that, and then it's kind of self, pays for itself in some sort of fashion, I'll wait.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have some continuity to this, instead of just doing it for one year and, you know, washing it away. If we could keep it, especially at the airport, if we could keep it current, sometime, somehow lock in a long-term agreement, I think it would be a little more cost-effective in the long run. Vice Mayor Lo.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I think we need to listen to the whole thing before we're making decisions, but I am leaning towards at least half of the budget going towards something at the airport directly, but I, there are a lot of options out there, and not even just digital, there's other things as well that we could be doing. I mean, something as simple as, very simple, there are certain magazines that are in all of the hotels in Broward County, and like Travel Host, for example, and people read them when they stay in the hotels. And I know we've advertised in, in that magazine, for example, for the Arts Seafood Festival, but just for the Arts and Seafood Festival. I, their prices are not ridiculous, I mean, it wouldn't be bad to have an ad in there all year round for the city itself, and for some of the things that, you know, maybe put something different each, each quarter, that's, you know, something featuring the beach and the pier one time, maybe sometime featuring Dana Point, something featuring, you know, the different festivals that are going on, whatever it might be, but something like that is, is simple, it's a lot less expensive, and it might be something that we want to look at. But I agree, we do need to have some, the bigger push as well, because the bigger, we need something big, that's gonna be a big splash, and I think it may be a combination between the airport advertising as well as something digital, like a commercial or something like that, so go ahead with the digital part, and we can talk further.
Yeah, like when you see the advertisement in Commissioner Davis's presentation, it just gives you one specific event, it's like, come to the Everglades airboat, or Jungle Queen, and that's what jumps out at you, so we just have to really highlight what tourists can do in our community. You know, like, the pier's a good one, we could really harp on that, like pier, fish off pier, you know, that, that's a good one. So, just, I, like I said, I just want to be very specific.
Yeah.
In, in our targeting on a wide, wide base, you know, you can attract the dad, you can attract the kid, and you can attract the mom all at the same time.
I agree, and, and I think that people knowing that we're, I don't know, less five minutes from the beach, from the airport, people who get delayed, people who have travel delays, I see them with their suitcases all the time at the beach, because people, you know, their cruises get shut down, I've seen them at the hotel. I've seen them at the Hotel Dolo, you know, they come out and they go to the beach. So, you know, that's, the beach is a, you know, it's a great location and to really, you know, target those people to come to. Because when I travel, I want to stay at the beach as long as I can before I have to go back. So, you know, I I think that's a really good idea as far as being really specific and targeted towards what we want to do. So I'm glad we're having this conversation now.
And lastly, before you start, let's think about, we're turning 120 years old. And sometimes there is a special type of logo campaign for that celebration. And I think that we need to start those conversations now. And maybe that can kind of be infused in some of it, you know, celebrating 120 years in Dana Beach or something like that. And then adding that to some of our, our marketing and our strategies. Because I think that whatever we come up with for, for that 120 years needs to really be infused in everything that we are doing in the next year. So just keep kind of moving.
That was one of my thoughts as well, the 120. So this would be 2023, maybe we do something smaller. And then in the next fiscal year, we could either increase the budget or really have all these preliminary conversations down pat. So that by 2024, then we hit it really with the bang in January and really throughout the whole year of 2024. So this is just like a beginning point and I see it, but I think it's important to, to begin to look at advertising now and then, and then really blow it up in 2024. All right, Monica, are we ready to go on to the digital advertising? All right, so when I originally started doing the airport advertising, I think, you know, well, what if people just come in and come out? They see it, they go away, they don't really, you know, have any way to figure out how to get to, you know, our major locations, to our entertainment centers, to our beach. So digital is, everybody, as soon as you get off the, off the plane or as soon as you touch the ground, everybody turns their phones on. And so that digital offerings are something that can pop up as soon as you turn your phone on. People go on Facebook, people want to say where they are and tag where they are. So these different digital offerings, we have the mobile, we have the desktop, different options. Both of them have audio streaming, banners, video and rich media. Next slide, please. So these are the different advertising, digital advertising products that are out there. And this is where the RFP would come in. This is where different, all, a lot of different companies do a lot of different digital advertising. These are just the kinds of products that I would want to see if we were to do our digital advertising. I would want to include these kinds of products into, into, into the RFP to be, to be looked at or to be, to make sure that we have in there. So we have the audio streaming commercials. I don't know, I listen to Pandora every day on my 5K walk. And you can target those areas, Pandora, Spotify, iHeartRadio, Univision, all of those different markets. Those are audio. And I'm like, how do you know I'm in Chicago? How do you know I'm in? Because they can target those areas to make sure that they know where you are. So the kind of company that I would want to see to be able to do multiple companies. And this particular company can do all of those. They have a median to be able to reach all those platforms. The podcast, we know about Spotify, Apple, again Pandora. So I I'm not a podcast person, but there, I know there are a lot of people who are. And some people listen to podcasts when they do their exercise as opposed to music. So you have the podcast and then you have the CTV and the OTT. And the C, the CTV is connected TV, which is the hardware, which is like your Roku, your Fire Stick. Those are the hardwares that we all have. I have Roku. And then the OTT is the over-the-top TV, which is the software, which includes the software app that enable the delivery of the streaming media on different devices such as computers and things like that. So again, you have different mediums for that, CBS, Universal, Fox, Pluto, Peacock. And you have Apple TV and the gaming consoles. So those of you who have children, you know, know about that. So those are the different types of advertising there. And then also video, so where you can have video that are delivered on the apps, on websites, wherever you can see a video, such as CNN, New York Post, TMZ, ESPN, CNBC, Sephora and so forth. So wherever, if we wanted to do a Dana Beach promotional video where it actually captures the people and captures all the things that we love about Dana Beach in one video, we could do that as well. Next slide, please. So this is an example of the banner ads. So I don't know if you've ever been scrolling through your phone at the very top, you know, you would see something like the Dana Beach, see it, live it, love it. And if that pops up on your phone, that would be an impression if you just saw it. But if you actually click to learn more, then, you know, maybe an advertisement of Dana Point or something else will come up like that. So as soon as you get off the plane or as soon as you turn your phone on while you're still on the plane, you might say, Dana Beach, what's that? You click on it, you see how close it is and you would have your rich media there. So those are the banner ads that would just pop up on your phone as soon as you landed in the airport. Next slide, please. Well, this is more about the banner ads, but it lets you know who you can target, who do we want to target with the banner ads. You can target all of Broward County, you can target just the the city, you can target whoever you want to target based on the individual IP addresses. The ads are delivered to more than 25,000 apps, which enable the banners to display on the mobile and the desktop devices. Each of them have a clickable URL, just like the banner, it says learn more, you click on the learn more and you learn more about the city of Dana Beach. So the ads are delivered using the banner and it shows the inventory, the ad inventory targeting the mobile apps and the desktop devices. And this one would just be for Broward County, but we could decide how far and how wide we would want the banner ads to reach. Next slide, please. This is the connected TV and the over-the-top TV. I kind of went over that already, but these are just the different mediums that you have. So Discovery, Fox, Netflix, Apple TV, Fire, Fire Stick, Roku, all of those could be targeted to have the different types of ads that were discussed. Next. Is that it? That might be it. I don't know. I thought there was another one, but was that it? That might be it. I guess that's it. So, and that one was more to demonstrate we have other options for marketing, whether we wanted to couple that with airport advertising. But when we put out an RFP to say this is the kind of digital marketing, that's the kind of things that I would want to include to make sure that we have a company that has a wide wingspan that can capture all of the different mediums on devices, different banners, videos, that we have all those options available to us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you for your thoughts on that again.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I think geo-fencing is is an extremely effective way to make sure that the people that are in our areas. And that that goes across multiple streams of different types of advertising. So regardless if you're on your mobile device, desktop, whatever it is, a geo-fencing company can make sure that our ads are targeted to those people that are in a specific radius of our city. So regardless of whatever we are doing, and I, and I think whatever we're doing needs to be, a lot needs to be on the mobile because everyone is on a mobile device now. I know maybe not our aging community, but for the most part, people who are still in the workforce and very intrigued with apps and everything else, they're on their mobile devices. And so I I think that that would be my favorite form. I know that all of this is different types of digiting, digital, digital advertising. But I also think that we could invest a little more in our social media campaigning and advertising as well. I think that there's an opportunity to take that to another level in what we are doing, not just, you know, promoting an event that's coming up, but really highlighting and promoting our, our city. And I think the same thing that we said for the airport can can go for that as well. You know, if you want to be promoted, you know, these are sponsorship packages and we'll promote you as well. But definitely mobile, 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 regardless if it's with the audio streaming, if it's with video streaming or those little commercial breaks. I think that that is, I I did not see any TV streaming advertising because I know that cable is not the wave right now. It's more so, like you said, like the Roku and things like that. But when you think of like the ESPN app, the sporting apps and, you know, these local news apps and things of like, things of that nature, that's also an opportunity where, where we can do some type of a study or get some type of information on, you know, what streaming devices are used the most or what channels are streamed the most or even with Netflix and see if we can possibly get some ads there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
So I agree, the geo-fencing is excellent. I think that's a good way to definitely make sure that we're targeting the right people. However, I I do think that commercials about a particular city are very effective. There have been a number of cities that have done them. Hollywood just did one not long ago. And it seemed to be popping up everywhere I went, whether I was at home or I was out or I was somewhere, it just seemed to be everywhere. And it was fun and it brought things to light about Hollywood, like places in Hollywood that maybe didn't have as much promotion. And I thought it was really effective. Key West has also done a few that I thought were very good. And some other South Florida cities as well that have just popped up here and there. And they play them on major networks. So although, you know, a lot of people, yes, are using Roku and Fire Stick and all that, a lot of people still just do have cable or digital TV. And so I do think that that's, if it's something that we can keep within the budget, it wouldn't hurt to pit from all angles and make sure you're covering the widest scope. So I think the one from Hollywood had a Marquis Brown type of commercial. And it was, it was, it was fun. It was a really fun commercial. And it was like, every time it came on, I was like, hey, where's he going? So it was very, it was cute. But anyway, so just something to think about so we could look at all different avenues and see maybe we could do a combination of things. Especially if we have, if we do half of the money towards the airport and then have the other half for everything else. We, I would think that we would be able to have enough to cover a number of different avenues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, for advertising, especially digital advertising, there's a lot that we can do. When we mentioned Hollywood, you know, as a side note, Hollywood invests a lot of money into their Chamber of Commerce. I know that we defunded ours. So there's a big issue right there. You know, we have these two Dana Beach apps. I got them when the city first got them and they're pretty much irrelevant now. So they just don't work. We don't advertise them, we don't promote them, we don't use them. And when you go on them, it's not really much information, doesn't really tell you what's going on in the city. So there's, there's a lot more that we can do. And, you know, we're hamstringing right now financially when it comes to this for the advertising. And, you know, I know that one commercial could cost upwards of $30,000, $40,000, just like that, you know, just to run it for a week or two. So, you know, the, I'm just saying, like, the ideas are great, but the money is just not there right now. So like a very cost-effective way to advertise in our city is you use the people who come into our city with social media and they tag themselves on, you know, Instagram and Facebook. And, you know, when you do those Facebook marketing ads, they're very cheap and the city can do them, you know, at a minimal price. But obviously we'd have to create a program and supervisor to control that. But all these initiatives that we take, we just have to definitely stick with them and monitor them to see how they're performing. Commissioner James?
Yes, just to speak a little bit on the apps. I don't have either one of them downloaded because one I think was just yeah, to go and tell if something happened. When the idea that came from Lauren Ottman actually initially came to get an app, it was really supposed to be an all-inclusive app. Like you can click on where to eat, you can click on, you know, maybe sort of like the chamber in your hand, I guess. You could click on, you know, hotels that we have activities to do. But I think that was more comprehensive and I think that it was more costly than what we were willing to do at the time. So I I'm, I'm willing to see how much it costs to really have an effective app because why do you have two? What are the two? I I didn't even know we had two.
One is Ask Dana Beach and then the other one is just the Dana Beach app.
What's on the Dana Beach app?
Programs, facilities, parking permit request. It's like the Welcome to the City of Dana Beach. Tells you like the calendar and leagues.
Okay, I'm wondering if they can be, if those who could be consolidated into one. Or if, you know, you can click on something and it opens up another page, sort of like how you do on websites. I'm not sure. But the, the point of that app was really to be an engaging app. And I don't, I don't know, like you said, we don't, we promote it sometimes, you know, with our Ask Dana Beach and things, but not. I'm not even sure how much we're paying for that or if we're even paying for that, we're doing it in-house, you know, because there are certain things that our staff probably could do themselves. But I wouldn't mind doing a hybrid of all TV, digital. I mean, we haven't even spoken really about billboards and and what that could do or even advertising again on our buses that we've done before, these big wraps that are eye-catching. Because you don't have to now, you don't have to block out the windows, you can kind of wrap over the windows as well. Bus benches, there, there are a multitude of ways, the, the kind of advertising. And I know print media is, is more effective than sometimes digital media because you see it and you see it and you see it and it kind of stays in your mind. So when you have certain sporting events at, at different places, you know, they'll put stuff on the bathroom floors or stuff like that because they want you to have that lasting impression. But I would like to see a hybrid of kind of all of them, but we're going to have to probably put the bulk of our money if we, if we're serious about advertising in the airport, in the airport, because it's probably going to cost the most. Because I certainly just don't want to do it for 28 days.
Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, I don't have any.
Okay.
Don't forget my hand there, Mayor.
Sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
You know, we're going to probably just keep repeating a lot of the same stuff over and over. I think, I think the, the budget is only allowing us to do so much. I think what we need to do and just in an opinion is everybody should be able to maybe put together a little package that we feel would be best for each of us, you know, maybe submit it back to Joyce as she started or Candido or whatever. And I think we need to have someone from our city reach out or a liaison from the city to reach out to these other people we've talked about and see if they want to participate, get, see how much our budget is and then have, let us put up, you know, some packages together that we all can agree on. Just the most like we did when we did our, our planning of our, of our city for the year. And I, because everybody wants to, and I think all that works, it's just about where we put it. And I just think that, you know, we just need to see what, how much funds we're going to get. Because if we can't include the businesses and we can't include, they don't want a co-op, then we need to take our $100,000 and put it where we want to put it and move forward and, but until that time comes, we need to be, we need to find out if there's any more monies or funds going to come in from outside participants so we can put all these packages together, then we can make a decision. I'm done.
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Davis, you had your hand raised for a little while. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I, I just wanted to be able to narrow down because we could go on and on and on and this could be a never-ending rabbit hole. So to really get consensus is if we think the airport is, you know, something that we all want to do, if we put our efforts into that, to just try to narrow down the options of the ones that we think that we want to explore as a priority and the ones that we think are most valuable because you do have particular banners. I got this really great little, I'll pass it around, little information guide from Hillsborough Beach. And it has its own little, you know, all the things to do in Hillsborough Beach. It does talk about, you know, what's beautiful, what makes it unique, and it is in print. And I see Jessica out there and I know the Dana Beach Press has a lot of, you know, they get a lot of views. Everybody, you know, I, I look at my Dana Beach Press and read. Everybody, you know, I, I look at my Dana Beach Press and read it every single day. So there are some options for print. There are some options for digital. There are some uh options for the airport. Uh, I would like to see the airport definitely because I think it's somewhere we've never been before. And it's, I think it's a sore thorn in all of our sides that the airport is there and we don't even get recognized at it. So for me, that would be a priority. Um, and then I think we can, can, can narrow it down from there. But um I, I think that there are also other effective ways. And then if we want to speak to, you know, some other marketing experts to see what the return on investment has been in some of their campaigns, then we can look at uh the return on investment in some other marketing campaigns to kind of really uh have some data to go behind the decisions that we make.
I'll go with the majority. Everybody, the majority. I'm in for the majority. So you guys pick it out. I'm good with all of it.
So, so I have a se- I have a suggestion. Um, I, I think we do need a marketing person to actually give us some advice on it. But my suggestion would be, what if we say at this point, we definitely dedicate half of the budget to the airport? The other half to other mediums. Have those other mediums explored and the airport explored and some other partnerships explored. And then we can always, if we want to take something away from the other mediums and add more to the airport, then we can have that option when we come back. But at least then we'll have all the numbers in front of us and we can get a better sense of what the options are that would fit within the budget. And then this way, like I said, if it, if we have, we know we've got fifty thousand that can go towards the airport and we can get some partnerships with people so that it saves us some money. Um, and then let's say we've got four other, three or four other options from the other mediums and they come out to fifty thousand, but maybe one of them doesn't jump out at all of us. And then we can maybe take that one away and put more money towards the airport. Um, I just, I would like to just see what everything is gonna cost and what the different options are before we go any further. But I, I, I personally am fully supportive of putting half of the budget towards the airport. Anybody else?
I'm with, oh, okay. Um, yes, I wanna, I wanna see how we track um the effectiveness of these campaigns. I know pretty much the, the best way typically people track these things is some type, some sort of call to action. Not sure how that works with, with advertising in the airport. Not my, that's not my um, not my area of expertise. But I'm definitely okay with half going into the airport. I would like us to choose maybe two different avenues of the other fifty thousand dollars um instead of just going so spread out so we can really have a concentrated effort in seeing what works, what doesn't work. If it didn't work this year, let's try something else. But I think maybe um if there is a consensus, consensus with everyone to do fifty thousand dollars for the airport, then maybe we then decide what others to mediums. If, do we want to do geofencing and have somebody come back with recommendations on how we do that? And if we wanted to do the other one with print media, because we know we have also um a, a part of our residents in our community that, that relies heavily on that print media or for the TV media or however that is, I just don't want to just say so many other options of the half because then you come back with three different options than me and then Vice Mayor comes back with three of the other options than either one of us had. And I think it's gonna be hard to kind of narrow that down. And I know you want to narrow this down, so that's my opinion.
Can, can I just ask a question of the Deputy City Manager? Do, do we have the resources available to um bring in either a marketing consultant or have somebody in-house do some of this research?
Yeah, thank you, uh Vice Mayor. I just, in regards to your question, we don't have anyone in-house with this area of expertise. But I did want to provide some additional information uh in regards to the marketing and advertising campaign that we are looking to, to work on. A- as you know, as the manager has mentioned, we're looking to bring in a communications director later this year or possibly the beginning of next year, of this next fiscal year, meaning this October. A- additionally, we're looking to include in the budget for the new fiscal year in October, PR firm to also assist with the global marketing of the city. We could also think about, remember a couple of years ago when COVID started, we did the, the PR videos where each one of the elected officials, he went to a restaurant or a business and promoted the business. It was, it was, it was a fun activity. Uh, the, the businesses loved it and that, and that goes back to what the mayor mentioned as far as promoting it on social media, tagging different individuals and, and, and um creating some advertising in the social media platform as Commissioner James stated. We need to not just promote at different lo- uh localities, but also on social media and putting some ma- money behind the marketing aspect of it. Uh, also several years ago, the CRA hired a very good marketing firm when they created the, the city logo. The C A, uh Live and Love It. And they did the, a, a, a very large marketing campaign, uh marketing the city, the logo, uh, the city, the C A Live and Love It on the county buses, also on the billboard on Griffin. That got a lot of visibility from uh vehicles traveling north and south on I ninety-five. I believe the com- uh, Bill would know, but I believe the company was called Redline Marketing.
They didn't do that part of it. They did the logo.
They didn't do that part. They did the focus groups and everything to really come up with the brand. But then we did um set aside a certain amount for a different company to come in and um, and, and carry out that vision. So it wasn't Redline that told us about like the bus wraps and all that other stuff. And I think we had like a billboard, you have, you had a full campaign. But that is something that we would, you would need someone else outside to do.
It was very well received. I believe it came out in the news, newspapers, social media. And these type of firms have the, the network of county agencies, airports, uh hotels, restaurants. This is what they do. This is their area of, of expertise. Also, remember, we do have a vendor that does all of our bus benches in the city that allows the city also to promote on the bus benches. So if there's an event or if there's just regular promotion of our city, we also have that capability um there. Going back, Mayor, to, to the two apps, I just want to clarify so everyone understands what are the two apps that the city has? The first one is the Ask Dana Beach. That's just a, a form for the residents, for businesses, for visitors to communicate with the city on anything they see out there. A leaning stop sign, uh of uh landscape blocking, a stop sign, cracked sidewalks. Uh, anything that they feel they need to report, that's just a way for residents, businesses and visitors to report. The second app is one that's called Rec Desk. That app is for residents that want to uh book activities at, through the parks, a summer camp, any, any other activities that they want to do, they have the capability of doing it through that app versus having to come in to the park. None of those apps are, are intended to be uh marketing or advertising for the city. Just another medium for residents to communicate with the sta- staff and facilitate bookings of facilities of programs. Um, I think that's it as far as what I wrote here. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Sure.
So, I'm sorry. So, does that mean that, so we don't have the resources at this point to bring in a consultant? Is that what you're saying?
We, we have the commission contingency.
Right.
We have the fifty thousand for the airport. You can use the other fifty thousand for whatever advertising or marketing. I would have to get with the finance director to determine if there's any other funding allocated or possibly could be used for either a PR firm or a consultant.
Because I don't want to waste our money on something that's not gonna be effective. And then if you have somebody who does it for a living and that's, and they know which mediums work the best, um, they may have better suggestions for us than us just sitting up here and, as the mayor said, spitballing ideas um that may not, you know, stick.
One last thing, I'm sorry. Uh Eleanor, uh, our community development director is also creating a, an application for the developers. I'm sure you see that the new developments, these huge jumbo-sized banners
Yes.
in which there's, there's gonna be a, a process for them to be permitted and allowed. And, and we're gonna include in their requirement to what Commissioner Savino said as far as in Dana, in the city of Dana Beach or your city of Dana Beach or city logo part of that jumbo banner. So that's also gonna be a source of marketing through the developments.
I have two things. Are you talking about the construction banners?
The large uh
The construction banners that keeps out the dust and stuff?
No, the ones in the buildings, the, the lease, some of them say for lease, some of them have the tell, when they, when the developments first open up.
Okay, okay. My other um huh.
I don't know. Yeah, please, city attorney.
The only thing I wanted to add is whatever you got, you decide to do, Frank and I will work with you on the procurement process to make sure that we follow the statutes, whether it's a sole source, et cetera. Um, we, we'll have to have those discussions after you decide how you're going forward with the process. And the only thing, I had a question on what was discussed. The, the funding that we're talking about for the airport, that includes this, you know, the install and takeout and then the, the monthly promotion, what you do a year, it doesn't include like the actual design of the advertisement as well? So you don't have to do that? You don't have to get a marketing company? I, I just wasn't clear. Thank you.
Well, I, I think there was a cost up top.
There is a cost. For installation, for produ- for production. Production would be them being able to do that. Uh, I did have the conversation, a lot of times when they're first starting, then they can sometimes, you know, work with us to do that production for free. And then, you know, the installation and the other costs would, would apply. Um, but I, I do have um Well, that's it for, for that topic. I just wanted to respond to that question. But there are some other ways that we can um gauge the visits for the website and, and by using the key, the QR code, not the website, but the advertising. The QR codes are huge when people, and when we have them on different, whatever we decide to do, that the QR code, everybody's using it for everything. When I went to Art Basel, everything had a QR code. It takes you to everything that you want to see. So I, I would really like to see that part uh implemented in what we want to do. Um, but at the end of the day, I agree with Vice Mayor Llewellyn and I believe Commissioner James, where, you know, we put fifty thousand towards the airport, fifty thousand towards another part. But bring in an expert, bring in somebody. Um, I know, yeah, Dana Point has a, a branding, marketing expert so that everything they do kind of always fits together. It's consistent. It consistently brands uh Dana Point in different ways. So I would really like to um, you know, go forward with that uh recommendation of doing half and half and then um seeing, seeing like really doing our homework to see how specific we want to be with it and getting the right people on board to make sure we have the right experts involved so that we're not um wasting money haphazardly. Thank you.
Um, I think we should figure out who Dana Point is using because maybe they have, uh, we can use the same person that kind of, I mean, they would be really familiar with the city, really familiar with what we're trying to do. And um I think that could possibly help us. So if we sat down with, with them and asked them, you know, or, you know, not to do it for free, but to use that person, or even to see how much it's going to cost. Because if a consultant is gonna cost forty thousand dollars, then of course, I don't think you want to use that consultant. Um, that's gonna eat away our budget like that. But maybe um because we are friends of Dana Point, it won't cost us um as much. And we do have contingency to be able to take out those. I'm okay. I'm in favor of using a contingency. Um, at least for a consultant, depending on how much it costs because I don't want to go into anything and really not know uh what the return on investment is, how effective it's going to be. And um, and they may have completely different ideas than us or more creative ideas because they're always, you know, dealing with the trends, always dealing with what's, what's happening um in, in data and, and in the market. And so market trends are very, very important when you talk about marketing and campaigning and, and having your brand voice. And so um I, I'm if, if I'm with the fifty thousand, I think that maybe at the next commission meeting, we all come back with two things that, you know, we want to dive in for the other fifty thousand. And uh maybe someone could bring us back a quote on how much it's gonna cost to get someone in here to, to do some type of a brand campaign for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Yes, uh, to that point, I have been offered to go to Dana Point and look at their branding campaign. So they've already kind of offered that service to us. Uh, they do it well and they, they weren't gonna charge us. So uh that's something that I could bring back and have a meeting the next time we, we come back. Because I know they told me there was like four different ways you could choose and they chose the entertainment brand. So everything that they do, it, it's geared towards entertainment. So that's, and they're called themselves an entertainment center, not a, you know, not a shopping mall and not a, you know, this and that. So um they, they have offered to, to, to let me see that, what that process is like. And that's something that I could bring back the next time. In addition to, um, you know, maybe that will narrow down some of the, some of the messaging that we would want to do and, and give us some more direction in that area. Yeah, they do.
Uh, so just to be clear, this fifty thousand uh that we're proposing to put aside for the airport for advertising, this is with the intention of obtaining partnerships, getting partners? Okay. Yeah, it's not just us on the fifty thousand. Yeah, and then we could see what we can do and work it from there. I think that's a good plan.
The fifty thousand would be the city's investment to be put out there to earn the um cooperation of other parties. And hopefully not just for a one-month period, but for a longer period. So that this way, if they see that we're putting it out, their others may also want to join in and, and add as well.
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Davis, do, do you think it's a good idea to first make sure we have a consultant on board before we make any decisions with the fifty thousand dollars? That way we have an expert on our team that could guide us through, through the whole marketing plan and, 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 and campaign versus us starting to do something that the expert might have told us you shouldn't have done, then we have to backtrack. So I do believe that we should bring the consultant on first. We already know we have fifty for the airport and then they could guide us on how best to move forward.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, I definitely think that this is a good idea to bring the consultant on first. Um, I just want to make sure it's the right consultant for what we want to do. And so, you know, sometimes people have, you know, different ways and of doing things, but a, a consultant that understands our vision and then move forward from there. But as long as we're, you know, that, that's our foundational plan, the direction we're going. And then, you know, we definitely have the expertise of somebody who, who does this for a living on board uh to assist us.
Uh, Deputy Manager Candido, what do you think a timeline would be on this?
As far as?
As far as from, from this meeting to actually getting up an advertisement for Dana Beach, either in the airport or somewhere around the city? Like, did we give ourselves a deadline?
I know when Commissioner Davis, when we first met, there's, there's a timing issue as far as advertising at the airport. The, the slots seem to get taken. The better ones, the, the Terminal One, the Terminal Four, we would have to first reach out to see what's available. This might, this year might be booked up already. Uh, once we find out, I think we should definitely reach out to, uh, we'll be, well, at the same time, we'll be reaching out to see who Dana Point is using as far as consultant or consultants from the city side. We'll see what other major cities, Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood are using as well to see if we could just piggyback versus, versus having to do an RFP or an RFQ, anything of that caliber. That speeds the process up. We already have funding, so we don't need to allocate funding to it. So I'm assuming within the next month, we would know who the consultant is that Dana Point's using, what's the availability at the airport. And we could have several options as far as what's Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, or some of the larger cities, or even Broward County using for PR. So we could do that possibly even by the next either commission meeting or the following one. That information.
I like that. Yeah, I'd say we should just give ourselves an overall deadline to get this all launched by summer, like May first. I'd say that would be realistic. Yeah, and also put a little pressure on us as well to get the job done. I like that. And we have a season that we could aim towards, which is the summer. Commissioner James?
Yes, I was gonna say we could probably piggyback off of some of the contracts so we don't have to go through the entire process. And I also think that uh we're talking about Terminal Four. I think that Spirit's Terminal. I know that we have a facility coming here. We should probably And I also think that, uh, we're talking about Terminal Four, I think that Spirit's Terminal, I know that we have a facility coming here, we should probably sit down with some of their people and see, um, uh, what opportunities of partnership and, or availability, if they can put some of our logos on their stuff. I mean, you, you don't know if you don't ask, you have not because you asked, that's what I've learned, so, it doesn't hurt to have that conversation. Um, uh, I, I know that the city manager has some, um, contacts when it comes down to, to Spirit and doing some of these negotiations and stuff that we, they, we've been doing over the past few years and so, um, just thinking about Terminal Four and thinking about you guys saying how one and four are always, you know, they're quick to, to, to be used up as far as the marketing, um, to just try those avenues as well.
Thank you, Commissioner James, Commissioner Davis?
I just do want to reiterate that I got this presentation yesterday and all of the inventory that we have now is available, but if we take, you know, a long amount of time, then it may not be, but all the inventory that you've seen today is still available today. Um, and digital can be up within two weeks if the creative is ready, four to six weeks if it's print. So that's our, you know, timeline, once we decide what we want to do, so I just wanted to add that, thank you.
Well, we gotta start somewhere and, uh, this is definitely getting the ball rolling, so, uh, I'd say this is productive, but let's just make sure that we stay on top of this and then if we have any new ideas, we always can present them to the staff and move forward, and then we could have another workshop also if necessary. But, um, I like all the ideas, um, I like the input and there's definitely a lot more that we could do regarding advertising our city, especially around the airport, we, we want to have some recognition there. And if we have to do it for ourselves and pay for it ourselves, then so be it. And, you know, if anything, it'll, it'll, yeah, it'll start, it'll start a trend and if, if you do it right the first time, then it'll be easier to follow up the following year. And when businesses start seeing that this is benefiting other small businesses in the neighborhood, want to get involved also, but, yeah, like, like I said, we gotta start somewhere, you guys allocated this hundred thousand dollars for this year, so let's make sure that we get on it and we spend it for this year. Yeah, that's, that's the most important thing. Anybody else, anything else? Uh, Commissioner Salvino's gone? All right. Okay, everybody, thank you, meeting adjourned.